I wanted to thank the candidates for the Board of Education for coming to share their platforms with us, for letting us ask some questions and getting some feedback. I wanted to thank Mark Peters and Jane Kerwin of the PTA Council Legislative Committee for all of their hard work. I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce our moderator, Mark Peters.
Good evening. Welcome, candidates. Thank you for coming out tonight. So, we're excited about this opportunity to hear from the six candidates who are vying for three Chapel Hill, Carrboro, City Schools, Board of Education seats. It's important to note that neither of the sponsoring organizations will endorse candidates. We're simply here to let everyone have an opportunity to hear the candidates, the questions that we've posed, the community. Let me just say that via our website and via email, we've received several dozen questions, which is very encouraging. It's pretty much a record at this point in time. If anyone wants to submit a question, you can go on, if you're listening to this over the cable cast, you can go to www.pta council dot com. I think Manu, who's the video operator, is going to put that on the bottom of the screen at various times. If you're in the room and you need a note card, just hold up your hand. Melissa, who's right there, will be happy to bring you a note card. And then just hold it up when you're done, and she will bring it up to the question vetting table. All right. So again, tonight's forum is sponsored by the PTA Council and the League of Women Voters. The, just to kind of go through the rules, when you've got six candidates planning and running one of these, it's really just an exercise in managing your time. You've got a certain amount of time for opening, a certain amount for closing, and you've got like an hour left in the middle. So, we've come up with this format, we hope strikes kind of a good balance between getting through and not having too much repetition. The moderator's allowed to interrupt to get the candidate back on topic if necessary. I don't think we'll need that. We ask candidates to use their closing time rather than revisiting past questions. We ask candidates to state when they agree or disagree with a prior position rather than being repetitious. Candidates, please define your acronyms. I know that for folks who volunteered in the PTA and these school improvement teams and things, it's so easy to get on these acronyms, and a lot of the audience may not follow some of those issues. Everyone, please turn off your ringers on your cell phones right now, if you don't mind. And one of the things we've done to try to get this candidate forum moving is we've taken some of the information that the organizations would share in the beginning, and we're going to kind of stick them as little breathers for the candidates. So, the candidates can kind of take a break while we tell you what we normally tell you in the opening. There's two types of rounds in tonight's forum. There's the standard round, and there's the lightning round. The standard round is basically a question for each candidate that where they get to answer the long question. So, for each question, we've got the designated candidate gets two minutes. The next two candidates get one minute. And then there may be a question that one of the remaining three candidates really wants to answer. So, they have this opt-in card that they can hold up, and each of them get two opt-ins. We're trying that this time. Just kind of keep things moving along. We'll see how it works. And I asked the timers if you guys could help me keep track of that and cross them off. And then we've got the lightning round, where each candidate answers each question. And the candidate gets up to 45 seconds. They're pretty defined questions, so they probably shouldn't take 45 seconds. Just to review, we've got the timers up here, and they've got a laptop where they're going to click a button, and it's going to count down the time. Fifteen seconds, it's going to turn yellow. They're going to hold up a yellow card. You need to wrap it up. When it, when we get to red at zero seconds, then you need to complete your sentence, and so we can move on to the next candidate. All right. Are there any questions from the volunteers or the candidates before we begin? Just to make sure we're on the same page. Okay? After an hour, we're going to take a short break. It's kind of what we agreed with the candidates, and then we'll begin again. All right. So, we're going to start out with the candidate opening. The seating chart was arranged at random in advance, in advance, so we could give it the lineup to the video operator. And so, we'll start out with candidate McElveen. You may begin. Three minutes.
Well, it's great being here, and I'd like to thank the PTSA and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. My name is Greg McElveen, and I'm running for election to continue serving on the Chapel Hill Board of Education. I have had the privilege of serving on the board since December of 2008, when I was appointed to fill a vacant position. After many years of volunteer work in the schools, I am grateful for this opportunity to bring what I saw as a fresh perspective to help our district meet our children's needs. Well, we all know that we have one of the best districts in the state. We must continue to build on areas of strength, but we must accelerate our progress in fixing our areas of weakness. All students have the potential for excellence. It's our job to engage them and equip them to achieve that excellence. This applies to students across the academic spectrum, from currently struggling to our average student to the gifted. Is it realistic to expect all of our children to excel? Yes. There are examples of public schools around the country that pull from communities with major economic disadvantages and family challenges that achieve 95 percent plus proficiency on rigorous state exams. We can achieve similar results and more. How can we accomplish this? Well, we must create a culture in which failure is not considered an option. We must build a culture in which all students are expected to learn and to grow in every class and every year, no matter what their starting point, no matter what their challenges. This means accelerating the, closing the minority achievement gap. This means enhanced responsiveness to children with special needs. This means meeting students where they are and getting them to where they need to be. So, to help launch every child on the path to success, we really must create an environment in which children love to learn and in which all feel welcome. We need to enhance our student motivation by making classes relevant as well as rigorous. We must provide teachers with ready access to proven innovative teaching methods and tools. Obviously, it's important to communicate regularly with our parents and to draw even more upon community resources such as businesses, universities, and community organizations. We have a lot of folks who are willing to help, and we need to draw upon those resources. It is vitally important to continue to recruit, retain, support, and reward in creative ways excellent teachers and staff. It's important to care deeply, challenge rigorously, and teach creatively. Finally, we must follow up. We need to do what we say we're going to do consistently and timely. Together, we can help all of our children achieve their excellence. Thank you for your support. Thank you. Candidate Brownstein.
Hi. Thank you also for this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Shell Brownstein. My husband and I moved here to this area 18 years ago. Since then, I completed my residency and research training at UNC hospitals and practiced as a general surgeon before retiring to raise our four children, who all have attended schools here since kindergarten and now are in elementary and middle schools. As a parent, I've experienced firsthand the frustration involved when the educational system, despite its many strengths and dedicated staff, is not meeting the needs of my child. Not all parents have the time to work as hard as I did to sort through those challenges, and they shouldn't have to, which is why I've dedicated my time to develop skills to advocate for all children, proactively working towards systemic changes in the district and the state, and helping families struggling to navigate this system for their own children. For years, I've been fortunate to be able to work extensively in our schools, not only in the classrooms and buildings, but also on district community and state committees. I've developed a sound knowledge base and demonstrated abilities to be an effective board member. The best example I can give you demonstrating my skills is my recent work on behalf of twice-exceptional children, those who are gifted and disabled. When I became aware that our district and our state had no formal means to identify and meet the needs of these children, I took action. I researched best practice across the country and effectively petitioned district and state administrators, including our current school board, to effect concrete change. As a result of my efforts, where there used to be no mention of these children meeting their needs, is now included in one of our district priorities for this year and in new state standards approved by the State Board of Ed in July. During the process, I found out firsthand the power behind perseverance and true collaboration. My understanding of our district, our schools, and our state's educational system evolved to a completely different level than what I had developed from all my previous educational involvement. I want to serve on the school board because educational success should be and can be a reality for all of our children, and I will proactively address gaps when this does not happen. The ultimate goal must be for all children to achieve their potential, so they not only graduate successfully, but also go on to meaningful achievement in today's ever-changing world. My top priorities are improving district accountability, collaboration, and communication, so our schools are more efficient and effective for everyone. We need to make sure the instructional tools we ask our teachers to use are evidence-based, so each child progresses as we address all achievement gaps. We need consistent, accurate measurement of the impact our programs are actually having on our children's success, taking into account input from teachers, principals, and parents. We need to address inconsistencies across schools in terms of inadequate infrastructure and overwhelming student needs. We need to make full use of our community's resources and expertise, which means not only identifying what's working in the schools and sharing knowledge across schools, but reaching beyond the district boundaries and strengthening our relationships with the community. Finally, not all voices are being heard. I want to make sure the board hears input from all involved, so that there's a truly accurate understanding of the reality in the classroom. That way, sound decisions can be made, especially in these critical times. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lee.
Good evening. I am Christine Lee, a physician and surgeon, and the founder of the Eye Institute of North Carolina, where I practice conference of ophthalmology specializing in cataract and refractive surgeries. I am married to Michael Lee, a faculty member of UNC, and we have three children, one in college and two at East Chapel Hill High School. I believe that every student counts and that every student deserves the opportunities and challenges to reach their full potential. I also believe, and I would like to raise the achievement levels of all students. I also believe that learning is a lifelong process, and I also would support a positive educational environment where we can foster a level of learning and engage our students. We will empower all students with necessary knowledge and skills to become active and contributing members and to compete in our global community. In order to achieve all this, it is crucial we retain and recruit best teachers and administrators, and also I would support parental involvement, because we know that that would maximize the educational experience of our students. I have extensive experience in volunteering and serving our schools and our school district. I served as a chair of the school improvement team at Smith Middle School for two years, and currently, I serve as a parent representative of the school improvement team at East Chapel Hill High School. In addition, I have served five of the district-wide school committee committees, which included many of the school board members, as well as it was all chaired by Superintendent Dr. Peterson. Through these experiences, I have built great working relationships, both with the school board members and with Dr. Peterson. And I think this is important, because I also have a proven track records as an effective leader of addressing concerns and issues and finding creative resolution, such as the recent one for the grading policy for the high schoolers. As a physician and a business owner, I am trained to critically examine and analyze the values and successes of new ideas and new programs, and to continue existing programs in the context of our changing and progressive community. I would like to bring this experience and perspective to our school board. Moreover, because of my background as a bilingual Asian American, I have a much more diverse and global outlook, which would be an asset for our diverse Chapel Hill community. As a practicing physician, I feel I'm very sensitive to others' needs. I'm a firm believer in a differentiated, customized approach, both in medicine and education, which supports individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Dancy.
Good evening. My name is Susannah Dancy, and I have three children in the school district. They have attended all levels here, elementary, middle, and high school. Currently, I have two students at Carrboro High School and one student at Culberth Middle School. This is a great school district for most students, but not for all, and I believe that we can do better. We have schools that are failing to meet state and federal standards, and we have students across the academic spectrum who are not reaching their potential. This is not acceptable. I took a headlong plunge into educational advocacy when I became aware that the Carrboro High School Arts Wing was not scheduled for construction until 2014. That's seven years after the school was to be built, or was, the school opened its doors. Carrboro High School is the only high school in Orange County that does not have an auditorium and a dedicated arts, and dedicated arts classrooms. Therefore, it does not meet minimum guidelines set by the state, nor the more stringent county standards. Fortunately, the Arts Wing will likely be built soon using federal stimulus bonds, in large part because parents, students, and community members were effective in communicating the implications of an incomplete school and students, and identifying possible solutions to the school board and county commissioners. I led this effort. During the dozens of hours I spent at school board meetings, I learned of the many needs in the school district that were not being met: leaky roofs, undersized science labs, poor indoor air quality, and about the uneven implementation of district policies, such as differentiation and professional learning communities. I want to serve on the school board. To address these issues, fairness and equity should not be dependent on how organized the parents are or how well they lobby the Board of Education. The ideas that I have for the future for Chapel Hill Carrboro schools are to increase consistency in implementing policies and plans in all schools, evaluate existing programs to see which ones are effective, so that they can be replicated, and to eliminate programs that aren't making a difference. We need to support programs for early interventions since research, since research shows that the positive results from these can carry on into early adulthood. We need to share best practices among the schools, finding creative ways to share resources, such as specialized teachers. And we also need to fully implement professional learning communities, so that teachers can benefit from the collective knowledge of our district. I believe that we have a great future in front of us and that we have great opportunities to help all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gucciardi.
My name is Miriam Gucciardi, and I'm running for school board and ask for your vote, because I am uniquely qualified to bring our community together to maximize achievement for all students. My greatest skill is motivating groups of people towards a common goal. As a small business owner, I founded and ran a business that imported American-made textiles into Asia. I worked on a tight budget, on the reverse commute, with few resources. And in this economy, doing more with less is absolutely critical. As a founding member of a bilingual school, play, I, I learned, I played a key role in writing the school policy manual, the PTA bylaws, and in fundraising for a 5,000-book library with supporting computer system. I have a proven ability to bring valuable programs to our community by creating partnerships. While at UNC's Department of Family Medicine, I organized the Family Health Fair with WCHL and women's basketball. As well, I organized Barnes and Nobles for a program with Family Medicine to help fund part of Reach Out and Read, which is a literacy program based in the doctor's office. And I also worked on Here's to Your Health, which is a radio show with WCHL, and it's on Mondays at 6:00 and Sundays at noon, and I urge you to listen in. These experiences highlight my resourcefulness, my school startup experience, and my proven ability to get the job done. I have a number of ideas to maximize achievement, and I'd like to just highlight three right now. The first is we need to be more innovative in the classroom, especially in the elementary years. Research shows conclusively that unless children become engaged learners by the second grade, their chances of success are much lower. Adopting research-based learning techniques in the early elementary years are, it's essential to reaching all types of learners. And I truly believe that every child is gifted. It's just that they don't all learn the same way. And if we can be very innovative and creative in the classroom, we'll reach all children. I also want to focus on life literacy, financial, computer, consumer education, health injury prevention. These are really important. They're important in the classroom, and they are very important in the workplace. And I want to support these types of skills to give our kids a great start in life. I also want to exploit technology. The computer, the iPod, cell phones, these, these are really learning tools, and they are integral to success in the workplace and in the classroom. Using 21st century tools is a cost-effective, gender- and race-neutral way to extend learning beyond the classroom. I commit that if you place your trust in me, I will work tirelessly for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Green.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Green. I'm a candidate for the school board here in Chapel Hill Carrboro. I have over 17 years of direct experience working in secondary and post-secondary education. I began my career as a social studies teacher at the high school level. I also was an administrator, as a dean of students in the high school. I went on to work in post-secondary education as an adjunct professor of political science, and then on to become a director of undergraduate research. And now, currently, the upward-bound director at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. I have one son who attends Sewell Elementary School. He's a fifth grader, and I'm running to impact students like himself as well as other students in the system. I like to see that the school works for all students. I like to see that our students have the best possible opportunity to succeed. And that is why I'm running for the school board. Some of my experience includes serving as a, as an exam reader for the College Board, AP exam reader for the College Board, as well as an advisory board member for DPI, the Department of Public Instruction here at the state. And so, those are some of the reasons that I'm running. This experience has been a wonderful experience, running for school board, having an opportunity to meet my colleagues here. But I have to say, it's quite personal for me. I'm, I'm from, originally from the Washington DC area. I attended public schools in Maryland. And part of my experience includes being a sixth, a sixth grader at a school right outside of Washington DC, where I was one of 21 students in a sixth grade class, one of seven African-American males, 12 years old. 10 years after that experience, I was 22 years old, finishing college. Five of my seven classmates, who are also African-American male, were in prison. And so, this is very personal to me, this experience in terms of serving on the school board. I want to impact all students. I want to see that, I want to increase rigor for students from K through second grade. It's one of my main goals. Another goal that I have is helping students in the transition, transitioning from elementary school through middle school and high school. I'd like to see students at the middle school level have more experience relative to research as early as sixth grade. Those are some of the reasons that I'm running. And I'd like to see the school serve all students. One of the, one of the issues we have here is that we do an outstanding job in terms of serving our main population of students and overall general population. But when you look at our numbers as it relates to Latino students, African-American students, we're only 4% ahead of the rest of the school districts in the state. So, when you look at our total population of students, we're 15 to 30% ahead of the state for standardized tests. But when you break our demographics for other groups, such as Hispanic, African-American, we're only 4% ahead. So, we're going to be truly an outstanding school district. We need to serve all students and provide a great experience for all of our students. Thank you for your time.
Great. So, now we'll start with the first round of questions. So, timers will have a two-minute initial response, and then two one-minute follow-ups, and then possibly an opt-in or two. So, first, we'll start with some statistics. Part of having a candidate forum is there may be a lot of viewers who don't keep up necessarily with the school system as others, and may be new to the area. As of 2007, from the Chapel Hill Carrboro website, our school district is 58% white, 14% African-American, 13% Asian, 10% Latino, and hopefully, everyone will be keeping up with the press that we have a growing Corin population. Folks who are fleeing Burma have over 100 students. So, now we'll get into the question, and we'll start with candidate McElveen. "The district has been working on closing the achievement gap for over 10 years, and little progress has been made. Why do you think the previous efforts have not been effective, and what would you do differently?" Why do you think the previous efforts have not been effective, and what would you do differently?"
That is definitely, uh, an area of frustration, I think, for many. I think we all recognize that this is an important, uh, important for the whole community to close this achievement gap for, we all need to be successful for the community to be successful. I think the reason that, there are several reasons why it hasn't, uh, we haven't made more progress. We have made some progress, but not nearly what we would need to be. And I think it's, it's a challenging endeavor, but it requires consistent implementation, uh, across the district. I think too often, the policies that we implement are implemented with discretion at the teacher level, at the school level. And, uh, that discretion leads to uneven, unevenness in results. So I believe we need to, uh, essentially look at what works and require what works to be implemented, and, uh, and then make sure that we provide the teachers with the resources necessary to make that work. So really, there, there really should be no excuses. Uh, we have examples of communities with much more challenges than we have who have closed the gap, who have eliminated the gap. So we know it's, it's, it's possible. We know others have done it. We just need to, uh, look at what works and, and, and follow through and implement. So examples of things that I would expect us to be able to do. There, uh, there are, uh, certain, uh, students, uh, many of them African-American and others as well, who learn differently. For example, some learn as, uh, more through, uh, kinetics, motion and, and music. So one example is, that helps everybody, is integrating more kinetics and motion and movement and music and chants in, in, in ed, in the curriculum. So, so you might, for example, have, uh, a, a math formula that is, has a mnemonic that has a chant to it. So, so the, the bottom line is there are, there are, uh, things that work. We just need to implement them consistently across the district and, uh, and help all of our students to achieve.
Okay. Candidate Brownstein, one minute.
I agree with, uh, Greg's comments as well, so I won't repeat those. Um, as far as, part of the reason I think we haven't been effective is I think there needs to be a, a real embracing of the idea of collaboration between the schools, the family, and the community. I think there have been some efforts at that, but we can strengthen that, uh, much stronger. The, right now we have isolated efforts going on in terms of the community trying to support the minority achievement gap and the school trying to. I think we're doing much better if we reach out and, and expand everybody's awareness of what the, uh, dynamics are within our own community. And as you mentioned, we also have this, this ever-changing diversity that's happening. So we have to be mindful of what all the issues are in terms of the gaps for all the children that are here. The other piece that I'll just add as far as differently, I think parent involvement is critical, as has been mentioned. But a dynamic that's unique here is that there are parents that have been through this school system that have been failed by this school system. So it's an added challenge for them then to be sending their student, their children here when they don't even believe the system's going to work for them. So I think we need to make some real concerted efforts on improving, um, that level of parent involvement so they can all be engaged.
Candidate Lee, one minute.
Despite our budget cut, we are currently spending over $1,250,000 just on the high-risk student services in our district. And I would like to look at those programs. If it's not working, I'd like to modify it, tweak it, throw it away. Uh, we should be adopting programs that has proven to work. Second thing I want to say is, um, I'd like to work closely with some of our after-school programs that we currently have, such as the Community After School, and also working with Ministry of Alliance, which also has after-school programs. In addition to that, I think we should be looking at, at, as early, uh, encourage our minority students to come in as a preschoolers and encourage them to be mastering their skills in their early elementary education, not passing the test. I'd like to also see early intervention at every school level for these high-risk students. Thank you.
Okay. Would any of the three remaining candidates like to opt in? Okay, we'll start with candidate Dancy.
Research, uh, longstanding research shows that, uh, shows that early intervention is the key, uh, to, to getting students, uh, to closing this gap. Uh, in particular, I'm referring to the Abbott-Sedarian study that was performed by the, uh, UNC's, uh, Frank Portigram Child Development Institute, which looked at students over a seventeen, or it's a seventeen-year longitudinal study that examines the, the benefits of early intervention. And what this is telling us is that, um, that early intervention is, is essential to closing, to, uh, raising the scores for high-risk students. And, uh, it's, it's more cost-effective and, and just more effective in general. So I, I believe that we really need to, to focus on those early grades and especially getting, uh, reading levels of, up to, up to speed by second grade. Because once that, once that age comes, it's much more difficult to, to close the gap.
Okay. Candidate Green, you wanted?
I'd like to see the school district, um, maintain high expectations for all students. I think that, that alone will really help. Um, one of the things that would help is to empower the teachers. Have teachers collaborate more with our local universities here. And have our teachers collaborate with professionals in the field that have been effective in doing this. There's one such program in Winston-Salem, Fourth State County, where they, a program called Career Start. The program in the middle school level implements, um, education as it relates to your career path. Many of us may have asked, as a student, I'm taking a math class, or I'm taking an English class. How does it impact me? How does it affect my daily life? When will I ever use this, as students often may say? And this program helps you do that. Helps you teach you how your education will impact your life and how it will help you in your career. So programs like that I'd like to see, and just maintaining high expectations for all students, I think, will really help us affect the minority achievement gap. Thank you.
Okay. So next question, we'll start with candidate Dancy. "A substantial percentage of Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools' children have been identified as eligible for gifted services. Do you believe that the district is allocating too few, too much, or just the right amount of resources to gifted education? What changes, if any, would you make?"
Uh, the district is not allocating, uh, enough resources or the right resources for gifted education, uh, right now. Um, unfortunately, given our, um, given the budget woes that we are in the throes of right now, I'm not sure that that's going to change significantly in the next couple of years. Uh, however, I think that we can spend the money, that, or we can spend our resources more effectively uh, to meet the needs of our, of our gifted students uh, by insisting upon, uh, best practices being used in all of the classrooms. Uh, our principals need to require that teachers show them their differentiated education plans to show that, that indeed they are, their lesson plans are geared around trying to meet different students at different ability levels, uh, in the classroom. Uh, we do still have pull-out programs, and those unfortunately are limited. But the, the reality is that our students spend most of their time, the vast majority of their time, in the classroom. And so the most effective place that we can, can meet the needs of those students is in the classroom.
Candidate Gucciardi?
Helping gifted kids helps everyone, and I fully support gifted services. And like almost all the programs right now, it isn't well-funded. And just from our, our elementary school, we should have, uh, two and a half, um, um, gifted specialists, and we only have one and a half. Um, gifted education is, is so crucial because we need to, because we look to the state curriculum, but we don't enrich it or add to it. And so when you think about the classroom, we're not building this creative place where children, uh, become lifelong learners. We have a place where teachers feel limited and, because they do have the state curriculum and because there is a sense that they're, they don't have the freedom to go beyond it. And so if we could enrich the classroom experience using innovative methods uh, and research-based methods, then we would serve all children, and that would also help our gifted children.
Candidate Green?
The school district could use increased resources for all of its programs, not limited to just gifted programs. Obviously, we need more resources. Um, so I would not want to see, um, the gifted programs' resources be curtailed or any of the programs. So we need more resources, whether you're talking gifted programs or whether we're talking with any of the other programs that we have here. Challenges are how do you implement this program in such a way that it benefits all students and especially the gifted students? Um, one, one of the things that we, we'd like to see happen with the gifted program is that we could, um, impact students earlier, K through second grade. Um, we need to find a way to service these students where some parents may feel the need to have their students, um, served at other schools because, um, our district is not really meeting the needs of these students. Um, so that's, that's one of the things I'd like to say, but obviously, um, we need resources for all of our programs, um, gifted programs included.
Would any other candidates care to opt in to this question? Yes, candidate Lee.
I just want to mention, we want to have our kids to compete globally. We got to think beyond our school district. And we have thirty-one percent of our school district children are now identified as gifted. So they are about a third, and we need to make sure they're getting the most out of their education. I want to see everybody reach their full potential, whatever that may be. So currently, we have two different programs. If you're in the K through three, we do clustering. And clustering really varies depending on the teachers and their, uh, skills at differentiation. So we need to encourage more of our teachers, who are clusters, to be working closely with GES. That means gifted education specialists. We also need to have more of them so that they are available. And we need to make sure we're maximizing that clustering experience. As well as for grades three through eight, we have a LEAP program and also clustering. And the same thing, we want to make sure our implementation of this program is working. Thank you.
Okay, great. Now we're going to take a little breather to recognize our, oh, I'm sorry, we got more opt-ins. I didn't see, I'll say it for, okay. Go ahead. Let's start with, um, candidate McElveen, and we'll work over that way. Okay.
In terms of resources available for gifted, I think the, uh, resources, I would say, in our current environment are about right. The question is how do you use those resources most effectively? And I would propose that, uh, that we, so, for one thing, spend less time testing to see who should be in-gifted and more time, uh, providing, uh, gifted education. And we also need to draw more upon our, our, uh, community of resources, our university, for example, and our, and we need to look at opportunities to, uh, uh, to utilize, uh, technology, either distance learning, uh, alternatives or, or, uh, or other computer-based learning alternatives. But I think we have a rich set of possibilities available. We just need to, uh, make sure that those are, are utilized effectively to provide enrichment, uh, for, for the, for our gifted students.
Okay, great. So candidate Brownstein?
I also, I actually feel like that our, our gifted programs are not adequately funded. We only receive four percent from the federal, I mean, from the state government. And so with our ratios being up to thirty percent, we're clearly going to perpetually be underfunded. Given that, I think some of the things that we could work at, because we know we're not going to change that in the near future, is we don't have good progress monitoring for all children in terms of, um, those that are at the higher end of the achievement levels. So I think one of the things we need to work towards is more, more individualized progress monitoring for all of our students so that we can then make sure that they're getting a year's worth of growth in any year. That's, um, going to be critical for all of these children. The other thing is we need to increase the curriculum options for students so that there is a breadth available, especially in terms of the opportunities that are available as the students enter high school. That, um, needs to have the honors courses that, that are available for children that have been getting gifted services all along. And I think we need to really look carefully at the identification standards that we're using because some children are going to be excluded from the gifted program just because they haven't had the opportunities in their own life in terms of, of, of additional achievement. Instead, it should be just measuring aptitude and capability. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I just want to remind folks that you can submit questions here with the note cards. How are we doing on questions? All right, we have a ton of questions, all right. Any, any areas that you want to?
We're consolidating them.
Okay. Are there any areas you think we're missing? We're pretty good? Okay. All right, just wanted to ask. Uh, so ptacouncil.com if you're watching this over the air. Uh, now's time to give thanks. We're going to have a little breather. Candidates, take a deep breath. I want to give thanks to the timers. We got Barbara Nettishim. No? Oh, you're Rita Wymer. Barbara was going to be one of the timers. I had written down, okay. I'm sorry. Mark Turhorse, okay, that's right. She said she didn't want to time because she timed one of the other candidate forums. Uh, Mark Turhorse. And we've got Jane Kerwin Frederick, raise your hand. Uh, she has been a key in organizing this, and I appreciate that. Uh, Gary Wallach, who's sorting questions, raise your hand. Chrissy Lyons, you met early, help us, uh, with the sorting of the questions. And Melissa Peters is our runner this evening. And I had that Evelyn Brennich was going to help too. I'm not sure if she's here. Okay, great. So if we need you, we'll, we'll call you up. I also want to thank Monique Valasquez, who's tonight's videographer. She's hiding in that, behind that one-way mirror over there. Jeanette Coffin from the town of Chapel Hill helped us organize the facilities, so we appreciate that. And Stephanie Knott of the school district helped us get the word out to all the parents via the, the tools that she has there. All right, great. So next up is a question. We'll start with candidate Brownstein this time. It's a question on nutrition and food services. This is one that came in on the website. We can't comment on the whether or not some of the facts in here are accurate, but, uh, it, it kind of jives with, uh, what we, what I've read, anyway. So it's Sudexo Incorporated is the district's contractor for food service in our schools. Our district pays a dollar more per meal than, than any other adjoining school district, yet customer service and food quality are considered substandard by many students, staff, and parents. Furthermore, Sudexo promised that the contract would be self-sustaining, yet the district must continue to subsidize its operation or lose federal funding for failing to adhere to nutritional guidelines. How will you work on the school board to establish or enforce performance measures from the Sudexo contract, including sustainable operations and customer satisfaction? And just so folks know, the, the contract is coming up for renewal, and it's one of the reasons we, we thought it might be, uh, good to get a discussion on it. So we'll start with candidate Brownstein.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the question, because actually, this is an area of concern that I have in terms of the, the budget. Um, the local budget funds were used to subsidize the, um, food service, and this has been consistently happening, and it's over $300,000 this year. So, obviously, I want to be very clear that, that providing nutrition and meals for children in our schools is, is vitally important, in particular for the children, where that's going to be the extent of the meals that they get for their entire day. If you, if you don't have the food, you can't learn. So I don't want to be misunderstood in terms of not being supportive of that program. However, if the, um, Sudexo is not going to be economically viable, then we have to look at other alternatives in terms of alternative contracts that would be able to maintain the high-quality food that is needed, but not require additional resources to supplement it. And that is just good, good business. They need to be able to manage it in an effective way without compromising the quality. And part of the way I think that we could hold that accountability piece is we need to get some of the concrete information and input from the, the staff, as you mentioned, and also from the, the students or the parents in terms of why they're using the service or why they're not. When I was on the Student, um, Health Advisory Council, uh, that, the nutrition policy was one of the issues that we worked on. And it's, it's critical that we make sure that all children have, um, good nutrition. So we definitely want to make that an option, but I'm not in support of continuing to subsidize a program that's no longer, um, able to self-sustain itself. We'd have to find an alternative program that would do that.
Okay. Next candidate, Lee.
Well, whenever the contract is coming up, I like to take that opportunity generally to evaluate the whole process. And I agree with, uh, candidate Brownstein. I think it has not been sustainable financially, and that is a concern. We're looking for healthy and nutritious food, obviously. However, how do we do that? I think it is a time to get bidding. I understand there is a lot of other school food services, and we should be evaluating. Take this as an opportunity for us to get some new bidding, new vendors, and let's see what's out there before we sign another contract with them.
Okay. Candidate Dancy?
There's not a whole lot that I can add to, to these two answers which summarize how I would, how I feel about it as well, which is with the, with the contract coming up for renewal, it's time to look at the numbers and look at the product, uh, consult, you know, consult the customers, uh, and, and make a decision based on, based on those facts.
Okay. Would anyone care to opt in to this one? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the next question. Candidate Gucciardi will answer this first. "Many parents believe the administration, school board, and parents are not working well or communicating well as a team to provide the best education for our children. Do you agree with this perspective or not? If you do agree, how would you change things to improve communication and this working arrangement?"
So the question out is, are we working well together as a team, parents, teachers, and administrators? I think this is one area where it is inconsistent among schools. Some schools are very good at sending home things by flyer, by email. Teachers, um, sending little notes home with children. Um, and so, but it is not consistent among schools. Um, when I compare notes at PTA Council or with other parents, I've heard one thing and someone else got something else, and they got it two days beforehand. It is absolutely essential that we work as partners, uh, especially the teacher and the parent relationship because they are taking care of our children and we, and, and- And we, and I am so grateful that they are in their care for six hours, learning, and want to be a partner in their education and their learning and their well-being. And I know for them, they want parents to be involved in their child's learning. So for me, this is a big area, because I think some parents don't always feel that welcome or that comfortable going in to speak with a teacher, or frankly, a principal. I know this can be a cultural thing, but also, it can just be, you haven't seen the teacher that much, you work, and you drop off before you have a chance to go in and say hello. You haven't had a chance to develop a relationship. And so having activities and parent education outside of school where teachers can socialize with parents, where it's a family day and you can get to know each other, really strengthens the relationship. And at the end of the day, it really takes parents, teachers, the community, the administration, our local university, and business partners to really support the education system in Chapel Hill-Carboro. And so I feel very strongly that we need to strengthen these ties as much as we can.
Can I agree?
The challenge, as it relates to communication among the administration, school board, and parents, has to do often with the fact that we have different techniques that we need to communicate with people that we're not utilizing. I think it's not safe to assume that everyone has access to the internet. They don't. Or everyone has a cellphone. They don't. Everyone doesn't get newsletters and what have you. They may not. They may work nights. Some people work nights. Some people work odd hours. So I think that, and then oftentimes, people may not have the opportunity to come to school. So I think that the effort, in my opinion, has to be more placed on the burden of the school, the school and administration, as well as school board members, to reach out more to parents. I mean, if you send a notice home to parents, and you don't hear from them, and then you call them, you don't hear from them, you may have to make a school drop-in or visit at the home. So I think that utilize every single effort you have or technique you have to get the word out about what's happening, and don't assume that everyone has the same ability to receive this information.
Thank you. Candidate McElveen?
Yes, in terms... I believe we do need to encourage more communication with parents, primarily particularly when there are issues that arise with the students. So no parent likes to be surprised when a student goes from, say, a B to a D, or when assignments continue to become missing, or when there's a field trip coming up. So I think we need to be sure that when there are anything that's different or anything new information that parents need to be aware of, that teachers need to make every effort to communicate that with the parents. And then we need to also, I believe, encourage parents to establish networks so that parents can help other parents actually engage more with the system. That's one thing that I have begun working on and will continue to, is actually establishing a network of parent advocates helping other parents.
Thank you. So now, we're up for our second breather. Chrisha Lyons of the PTA Council is going to tell us a little bit about their mission. Mark?
Can I...
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. These opt-ins are a problem, aren't they?
It's your mission.
Would anyone, would anyone at this point in time care to opt in? All right. Yes, candidate Brownstein?
As I've emphasized from my end, communication is absolutely essential. And I agree with what's been said already, so I'm not trying to reiterate that. I'm just gonna speak to an aspect that I think is an additional piece that's missing. And that's actually when things are not working for a parent and their child, and in dealing with, how do you communicate that effectively to central office administration and then to the board? There's a lot of frustration from parents as far as the amount that it takes to come up, to present before the board, or to go to Lincoln Center. And that's something that I think we need to work at to make it accessible to all. And one thing I would like to work on as a board member is when parents come to do speak before us, that we would be part of the process, would be explaining a little bit more in terms of feedback, because it's a brick wall usually when that's done. And then I think of all the parents, as Joe was saying, that can never get an opportunity to come and speak before the board. And that's why I mentioned that we have to be mindful that the voices are not all being heard, and that includes teachers as well, who feel intimidated to come and speak before. And then, as a board member, you have to think of what voices are missing, and make sure you're taking into point all of those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else care to opt in? Okay. So seeing none, I will turn this over to Chrisha Lyons for a little breather. Tell us about the mission of the PTA Council.
So one of the sponsors of this particular candidate forum is the PTA Council. And the PTA Council is an umbrella organization for all of the PTAs in the district, and it serves as a clearinghouse for information to, from, and between the school PTAs and other agencies that are interested in the education and welfare of children, which would include the Board of Education. In fact, we have a representative from the Board of Education come to our monthly meetings. That's very edifying. One of the primary goals of the PTA Council is to support the PTA vision, which is to make every child's potential a reality. So the overall purpose of PTA is to provide a powerful voice for children, to be a relevant resource for family and communities, and a strong advocate for the education and well-being of every child. We're dedicated to promoting children's health, well-being, and educational success through strong parent, family, and community involvement. This year happens to be the 90th anniversary of the PTA in North Carolina, and I was at a meeting of the NCPTA Council Presidents on the weekend, and I received a copy of this book, which I was surprised to find very interesting. You see, it's about the first 50 years of the PTA in North Carolina, so it's 40 years out of date. And so I thought that I had nice firestarter on my hands, but really, it was kind of interesting. So it records all of the resolutions of the PTA over the course of its then-50-year history. And some of the earliest initiatives involved caring for the needs of the undernourished children, improving classrooms, playgrounds, landscaping. They talked about the overcrowding in schools, parental indifference, school attendance, art instruction, and adding physical education to the curriculum. So it amazed me how much has changed and how very little. The last year recorded in the book is 1968, and at the 1968 convention, the theme was, "PTA Salutes the Team." And we still have this theme. It is the slogan of the PTA that we seek to be part of the team. And here's their slogan, "Together, we will energize all child advocates to make a difference." So in 1968, the opening remarks at the NCPTA convention were given by Mrs. Mons, who stated, "The PTA is no island. It does not operate alone. We work with other resources, and we seek other resources from those agencies whose particular aims are concerned with children. The PTA's scope is so broad and so vital that we have always used the help of other groups and organizations. We salute the team. So I am looking forward to being part of your team." And I'd like to take this opportunity to invite any interested parties to our next PTA Council meeting tomorrow at Smith Middle School at the Media Center at 7:00 PM. We will be discussing the school nutrition program. And with no further ado, I'll turn the proceedings back to Mark Peters.
So next question, start with candidate Lee. And the question is, "Do you support the school's adequate public facilities ordinance, which guarantees that schools are built in time for new developments? What should we do about bringing old schools up to comparable standards of cleanliness, technological capabilities, and desirability of a learning and teaching site for both students and faculty?"
I think that's a very important question. As our town is growing, obviously, we're gonna need more schools. And Elementary 11 is in the books, and I know we are right now waiting for the Chapel Hill Town Hall's approval in their meeting in October 28th. So in addition to that, it's very nice to have wonderful new schools. Of course, it's slow in buildings such as Carboro, but we are getting them. But what do we do about older schools? And I think we have to be fair and equitable in our resources. So we need to set up a capital funding for the maintenance of the older schools. For example, I know Culberth is lacking science lab. I am aware of some of the elementary schools that's still using the trailers and et cetera. So the way we do that is, we have to have a certain percentage, not only for new schools and the capital funding. I think it is very important for us to set aside a certain percentage to spend in maintaining and updating our older schools, including technology, because technology is such a new, it's an important resource for our students. In addition to that, we also have to be mindful as to, when a new school opens up, they get a brand-new technology that particular year, and then they'll be soon outdated. Such as Smith Middle School, when they came up, it was great. But now they're seven, eight years old. Apparently, they have the oldest technology now among all the middle school. So we can't just forget that they've been new for a while, so they should stay new. But we have to be looking at this on a continual basis, and we should be evaluating where our priority needs to go. And I am all for updating our older schools so that they're be all similar in terms of the resources. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, candidate Dancy.
When SAPFO was passed as an ordinance to try to stay ahead of growth, it was very forward-thinking, and I think that we have, we see the benefits today of our... When you compare Wake County, which did not, was not building schools when growth was coming to their county, and you compare with the overcrowding that they have there and the constant rezoning that they have, as a result of their growth, you can really see how it is that SAPFO was very forward-thinking in getting, in keeping us ahead of the curve in terms of overcrowding. With that, though, we've been building so many schools and neglecting our older schools and ignoring the differences between those schools. Couple of the things that I've heard, as I've been attending school board meetings, have been things like smaller, older elementary schools have smaller classrooms, and that, just generally speaking, the buildings were designed before, you know, they were designed 40 years ago, and we teach differently today. So addressing the needs at older schools is an essential priority.
Thank you. Candidate Gucciardi?
I want to focus on the older schools, because I think this is an area that we really need to focus on. Even a newer school like Rashkis is finding itself a victim of the digital divide and needing to put in Wi-Fi to make good use of all the smart boards that we just got. And that's an expensive process. As well, schools like Phillips, we hear stories of leaky ceilings and sewage, and Culberth, the science labs need updating. I think a review of our facilities and then a partnership with the community to look at how we're implementing tech and how we're treating our facilities is really essential. And we have such a broad base of expertise in our community, including parents who are working at some of the computer companies that, in conversation, bring up a lot of things that they could do or bring to the table, either at a lower cost or free. I want to draw on these resources, because I think these are the parents who are seeing beyond the future, beyond now, and in the future of what our kids are gonna need technologically-wise and with our facilities.
Okay. Are there any candidates who want to opt in to this one? Okay. Seeing none. We'll start with the next question, which starts with candidate Green. "How well is the district meeting the needs of exceptional children? The district is implementing Response to Instruction, RTI, methods to facilitate the education of children with special needs. Do you support the initiative? If so, how will you evaluate for success? If not, what approach do you favor?"
I think that this is an area that's a pretty sensitive area in terms of the challenges that you have in terms of working with exceptional children. That's a tough question, I think, in terms of what we need to do. I think it's something that has to be sort of monitored very closely and on a quarterly basis. There are best practices that are being used, but not only in the other districts here in the state, but around the country. What would I like to see happen? I think when, I think I would like to find out how the parents feel about the program as it relates to the kids, and is it meeting the need that we have? I think when you're looking at working with exceptional children, as this program works with children, I think it's not as simple as how are students performing relative to tests and results, but I think it's also important to see, how do the parents feel about this program? How's this program comparing to what other areas are doing? So I'd like to see just a little bit more time in terms of what's going on with it. And then, how is this program being utilized as it relates to other exceptional programs in and around the country? I would like to see us, again, engage the university more, those who work with exceptional children at the university and the School of Education, to see if they could help impact us as we try to work in these programs. One of the things that you have to think, there, some of us here on this board have worked with children that are twice exceptional, I'm sure that have come up. So when you say exceptional children, I'd like for you to kind of give us a little more feedback on what you mean, if you will.
All right. Candidate McElveen?
Yes. The question referred to Response to Instruction, which is a new, actually, requirement of the way that we administer our exceptional children program. And I believe it's a positive direction, positive move in the right direction. In the past, exceptional children were only served after they failed. And then the, and then it was, you had to play catch-up. And so with Response to Instruction, the idea is to begin to identify needs earlier on and then to respond to those needs on a more timely basis. I think that's something we definitely need to do. We are building upon that and teaching that in our district. And so I definitely support Response to Instruction. I believe it's something that, again, we need to implement on a very timely and consistent basis. We need to provide the right support for our regular ed teachers, as well as special ed teachers, to know how to do it. We need to provide consulting and teachers' assistance to know how to do it. And we need to make, give them time to implement Response to Instruction initiatives.
Thank you. Candidate Brownstein?
I won't be able to cover it all, so if you have some questions to ask me afterwards, please do. We do have to support responsiveness to instruction, because it is a federal initiative. But it's actually beyond just for EC children. This is actually going to change how instruction is happening in the classroom. So this is going to affect all of the children. And it came out of a movement for special ed, but you need to realize that this could be beneficial for all kids in the terms that there's going to be progress monitoring that's done quite frequently. And in the pilot that was being, is undertaken at Rashkis, when they did that at the second grade level, they identified a cohort of African-American boys in particular who are not reading at grade level, and they were able to identify the kids that really needed some additional support and give them, work towards giving them what they needed. So those weren't children that were identified with disabilities. They were just children who were falling off the curve in terms of normal progress. So the potential is very exciting. However, like any program, we have to make sure it's done appropriately with fidelity. We still need to know what curriculum is being chosen, and that is dictated by state options, but that's a critical question. We need to know, the parents need to be better informed, I think, about the terms of how this is rolling out, because this is going to encompass the entire district, and feel free to call me later.
All right. We have several opt-ins, so we'll start with candidate Lee.
Exceptional children is actually personal to me, as I have a nephew with autism. And I've seen him firsthand, it's how devastating it is for him individually, as well as the family. Exceptional children actually encompasses a huge diversity in that group. So you have to look at them as individual, not as a whole group. And it takes, if you look at that group, it's a lot of physical disabilities, as well as learning disabilities, a variety of different level. So we really want to, we still have that SNAP implementation. We only just did the second year of exceptional children's, the plans that was just finished last year, and this is our third year into the improving our district for the exceptional children. So I think this is an area that we still need to improve in our school district. Thank you.
Any other opt-ins? Candidate Gucciardi?
I think RTI is one of the most exciting things to hit our school district, because it gives teachers a plan of action when children need extra help. And it's like a pyramid system for the intervention. So there's a lot of follow-up and accountability that goes with it. And in fact, the accountability is part of the federal law, is actually mandated in the program. So I find this a very exciting new tool for our schools. It is good for all children, and I think it will, that early intervention will minimize problems later on. And so I think, for me, it's something that everybody should keep their eyes on, because it could really increase the power of teachers to help all children.
Great. Any other opt-ins? All right. So just to run through, I think candidate McElveen, Dancy, Gucciardi, and I have Green have remaining opt-ins, is that right? have remaining opt-ins, is that right? That's what I have. And Green. Not McElveen? And McElveen, okay. Great. Just so the candidates know where they stand. So now we're going to have a breather, and Rita Wymer for the League of Women Voters, going to tell us about her mission.
My name is Rita Wymer. I am treasurer of the League of Women Voters of Orange Durham and Chatham County. And I'd like to briefly tell you a little bit about our organization. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization formed in 1920, when women got the vote. It neither supports nor opposes candidates for office at any level of government. We are a political organization because we encourage informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major policy issues, and we work to influence public policy through education and advocacy. One of our main activities in voter education is voter education, and that's why we're sponsoring this, co-sponsoring this forum tonight. Any citizen of voting age, male or female, is eligible for membership. If you would like to know more about the, our work, please visit our website at LWVODC.org, or visit our membership table at the back of the room, and our membership chair, Evelyn Brintich, would be happy to talk to you about the activities of the league. Thank you.
All right. You guys want to take your short break right now? Yeah? All right. So we're going to take a, we'll try to keep it to a two or three-minute break. And folks on the cable broadcast are going to see it just cut off, and we'll be right back. All right? So if anybody needs to go to the restroom, whatever.
About when advocating for children, and we want these to be brief, so you guys kind of summarize it, okay?
Why do you look at me when you say?
No, no.
One of the things I'm not very good about is talking about myself. That's one of the things I've struggled with with this campaign. But advocating for children has become my life, and really, it's about anything that any time I see a child in need, I've done things in terms of when I've realized there are children that don't have books at home, I created a system so that not only every child got a book, but they get the books in their home funnel to those who have the greater need. I will go to the bat for all the kids when I see that the system isn't working. I'm diligent, persistent. I work with trying to get leverage all of the people that are involved. And I guess, I mean, that's that's become my life. And I have a proven track record in far as far as making a difference for many different children across the board, and that's who I am.
Thank you. Candace Lee?
Well, I believe that education is so important. Of course, I have that Asian bias. I grew up thinking that, or I was brainwashed to think that. But what really I'd like to advocate is every children needs that opportunity. And if you don't give them the opportunity to succeed, or have that ability, or the or let them get to their full potential, then I think it would be really sad. One of the things I do actually in my practice is it is always rewarding for me when I put on that first glasses in a child's face and say, "Oh, no, now I can see. I've been missing out." So I would really like to advocate for the opportunity. Expect the highest from every student. Thank you.
Candace Dancy?
I think that people would say that I advocate for fairness. I started out in my introduction talking about the Carboro High School Arts Wing. I have only one student who who actually participates in theater arts or in performing arts, and he's a senior. So by the time this Arts Wing gets built, you know, he's going to be long gone off to college on some stage there, on a stage there. But it was the fundamental unfairness of the students at Carboro High School not having not having a part of their core facility that, you know, got me involved, and that's why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Candice Gucciardi?
I advocate for three things. The first is literacy. I believe that the library and reading are the center of opportunity for all children and all families. The second is world language. I believe the world is smaller and smaller, and no matter what language you learn, it is important to speak another language. And right now, I'm working with Joanne Chang to start a Chinese Teachers Association, and she's actually doing all the work. All I'm doing is networking to help her. And then the third thing is I really believe that genius is created and that all children are gifted, and it is nurturing learners that is so important. And so those are the things that I advocate for.
Candice Green?
I think people would say that I truly believe that all students can succeed. What am I known for? Working with first generation, low-income, underrepresented individuals from all levels. And so that includes just about everyone. Gifted students, working with the AP exam, working with honors programs, working at the high school level, working at the college level. My life has been devoted to education. So just this idea that all students can succeed, everyone matters. Everyone needs to be a part of this idea of education, and education ultimately, for some folks, is an alternative for crime. So I just believe education is a moving force and can be really instrumental in everyone's life here, so.
Candice McElveen?
I first got involved in advocating for kids when I saw that we had such a tremendous minority achievement gap. That's what first got my interest. Then I saw that that we were failing many other children as well. And so I would say that I advocate primarily for meeting the needs of all of our children. And I think we need to teach differently to different kids with different needs as a key. And I also believe that I am known for collaboration and for collaboration and implementation. So that's what I've been focusing on on the board thus far is more consistent implementation of all our initiatives and making sure that we are providing the resources we need to get the job done.
Okay, great. So the next one, we'll start with candidate Green first. And this is going to be name your two highest priority topics, goals, or issues. And please try to name them without a long explanation.
One is increasing rigor for all students, K through K through second in particular, and also the transition through middle school in terms of implementing research for those middle school students. The second initiative is closing the minority achievement gap, making sure that all of our students are receiving the kind of resources they need and students are succeeding at the same level. I'd like to see all of our students sort of have the same kind of exposure and/or same kind of results. So I'd like to see our Hispanic students and African-American students be fifteen to thirty percent higher on standardized tests like the rest of our students in the district. So increasing rigor and working with research in middle school, I guess I give you three, and then closing minority achievement gap. Thank you.
Candice McElveen?
Yes, my highest priority really is implementing a culture in which all students are expected to achieve and all students are expected to learn and grow consistently every quarter, every year, every class. And I believe that we need to hold ourselves accountable for that and with a no excuses approach. And when we have that type of culture, then we all do what it takes to get it done. So I don't think we can prescribe necessarily detail by detail what each teacher and each class should do. We just need to know that that teacher is expected to make sure that every student in that class is expected to learn and to grow, and we need to provide that teacher needs to make that happen, provide our parents what they need to participate in the process and draw upon our community to together, make sure that all of our students excel.
Candice Brownstein?
My priority is that every child experiences success in this district. And I would say my top two priorities to make that happen, first of all, is the accountability issue where we have to make sure that the procedures that are in place in the classroom are evidence-based. And we have to make sure we have measurement of effectiveness of implementation of those things. But the second priority for me is really to take on as a vision for our district, the power of the collaboration between the family, the school, and the community. I attended Governor Purdue Summit on this initiative. It's a federal initiative, one of the first of six across the country. And I can tell you for districts where that becomes the vision that they embrace, they have higher achievement. And our community is ideally suited because of the level of professionalism that we have and the level of experience that we have in terms of all aspects of our community and our world.
All right, thank you. Candace Lee?
For two priorities, of course, I like to see higher achievement for all students. With that in mind, I like to emphasize the early education. Early education is so important as a building block for every student's success. And I would like to see more mastering of skills, not to be tested after tested. I think they need to learn how to read, write, and et cetera. Second thing is high-risk students who are really struggling. I like to see them to have more success. And I have a pretty good idea where we can start by looking at our programs we have currently existing. And I like to guess some of the programs that is has been proven to be more effective. Thank you.
Candace Dancy?
I'm going to go after what you said in the beginning, which is be brief. Best practices in all schools and all classrooms, and early intervention for high-risk for high-risk students. Those are the two initiatives that I place at the top of my list.
Candice Gucciardi?
For me, the professional learning communities is very important, and that's one of my top priorities. It will create a culture of innovation in our schools and from kindergarten to high school could really change how education is delivered and will definitely positively impact our students because they'll see teachers learning themselves and setting the standard. My other goal is to prepare our students for the 21st century, and that means a devotion to world language with accountability, a devotion to the computer and to computer skills, and a real commitment to creating lifelong learners by creating an enriching environment where children are stretched to learn and think and and learn and think and and fail and succeed and over and over again.
All right, do we have a 30-second button? All right. Next round is 30 seconds. All right, we're going to start with candidate Lee. And the question on the table is, "The State Board of Ed recently approved allowing middle schools to offer freshman English. How do you feel about offering high school classes and middle school?"
I think it gives them an opportunity for to start thinking about high school early on, and I don't think it'd be disadvantageous. But we just want to make sure that students are ready for it and not make it a penalty for them. And for some students, I think there would be a great opportunity and good challenge for them. But we cannot forget those students who may be struggling, and we don't want to put them in a situation where they are bound to fail.
Candace Dancy?
We've been pushing curriculum down by at least a year for a while. I'm not sure that that's the best thing developmentally for students, although we do want to make sure that they're challenged at whatever level they are.
Candice Gucciardi?
This is part of a trend called Growing Up Younger, where we do push more on our children at a younger age, not just academically, but socially and emotionally. I would prefer to enrich the curriculum with age-appropriate topics and books and assignments.
Candice Green?
I think the key is that you said that this is available, so therefore, all students won't take advantage of it. But I think what it does is help have a ceiling for students. So students who could utilize this, I think is a great idea. Obviously, all students won't have to aspire to take high school English when they're in middle school. But for the students who could utilize this, it's a wonderful idea because you want our students to reach their ceiling. So I would support it.
Candice McElveen?
We already do offer high school math in middle school. I believe it is not too much of a reach also to offer high school English in middle school for those students who who are ready for that. I don't think we need to push students, however, to to be stressed to feel like they need to do it. But in general, I think that's part of our differentiation and part of what we do to make sure that we are fully enabling our students to achieve their potential. If they're ready for it, then then let's make it available for them.
Candice Brownstein?
Broken records here, but I support the initiative too, and I don't have a choice, I guess, if it's passed by the State Board. But I think we have to be careful, first of all. A lot of times, these kind of options are not clearly communicated to all parents. And a lot of times, there's background networking that's happening between parents. So I would want to make sure that this is clearly communicated to all parents, first of all. And then along the ideas that we don't want our children to be overly pushed. I think that's an issue in our district. Some children feel incredible amount of stress because of the way we're being pushed. So the objective in terms of what what are the requirements to take this class? And as we've talked about, not overplaying it so that some children didn't get sucked into the notion that they had to do this to be successful, but rather that it was an opportunity that's appropriate for some.
All right, great. So we'll start round four of the Lightning, which candidate Gucciardi will begin. We'll do 30 seconds again, and the question is, "The district seems to be ending teaching time earlier in the semester. So more time is devoted to review, testing, and retesting rather than instruction. Please comment."
There's so much emphasis on the test right now that it does take away from classroom instruction. I think that we can't waste one minute of teaching time. We need to be able to to better to better to make our teachers better able to take kids who need extra work and give that to them as they prepare for the test, but then for children who don't need that kind of revision in time, to have specialists and other teachers available to add to their curriculum and continue on with their studies.
Candice Green?
I think this is a great opportunity to empower teachers. I think your question was about review and testing evaluation, what have you, and less time for instruction. But the question should be, do the teachers feel as if they have enough time to get to properly get the instruction across? So I'd like to see find out what the how the teachers feel, have more impact, input and feedback from the teachers relative to performing their job.
Candice McElveen?
Well, this year, for the first time, the state enabled students to retake the end-of course, end-of course and end-of-grade test. And if they did better the second time around, enable them to count the second score, which actually helped many of them achieve much greater level of proficiency than they would have otherwise. So this this definitely was a positive for many students. However, I believe that for that we don't need to make this make remediation something that all have to do. It should be appropriate. It should be targeted to those who need it. For those who don't, there should be a period of enrichment.
All right. Candice Brownstein?
It sounds like they're two different issues. One is the end-of-grade testing, which would happen at the end of one semester. And I do feel that we're there's so much teaching for the test and agree with candidate Green that we need to get input from the teachers. One of the concerns I do have is how much time the teachers are spending out of the classroom, not only in meetings, but also in times of not doing instruction, when we know that by by global standards, we're already behind the eight ball in terms of the amount of instructional time our students have. Then the other issue, I guess, at a semester level would be from the high school level in terms of midterm exams, which have just been removed since the state changes in the way the testing has to be done.
Okay. Candace Lee?
Although testing may be important assessment tool, we've got to keep in mind that we've got to give them the tools, the knowledge, the skills for them to do well on the test. And I'm all in favor of retesting because if they have learned and mastered the skills and knowledge, isn't that the goal? It's not the goal for them to get tested and saying, "Okay, you didn't do as well." I think our whole goal of testing is so that we can just test to see what they have learned. So we need to make sure we're getting that form or part of that. Thanks.
Next candidate? Sorry, we're running out of time here. I'm trying to figure out how to best use the rest of our time.
I believe that we have that the extended testing time at the at the end of the year certainly is eating into instruction time. I approve of the way the the district has approached the high school midterm situation in which the teachers have already indicated that they don't that they support the elimination of a high-stakes test at the end of the first semester, and I think that's an indicator of of the commitment to teaching time as opposed to test prep time.
Okay, now we're going to begin a main round, except I think we're going to modify it to be just one minute for three candidates since we're running out of time. The first question will be candidate McElveen. "We seem to be losing more and more of the curriculum offerings that used to make our schools some of the best in the country. How do you propose that the Chapel Hill School District maintain its reputation providing a high-quality education that can challenge all students, gifted, average, and exceptional, given the budget cuts that are projected to continue?"
I believe we actually have reduced very relatively few classes. We have many, we have more, I believe, AP classes than just about any district in the state. We are perennially ranked as one of the highest performing districts in the country because of our number of AP classes. So I think that we we need to continue to offer that. We have what we have done is reduce classes that have low enrollment so that where the demand is low, we just can't afford to offer offer classes. For example, if there's just five students who are enrolled, it just in these these days of limited financial resource, it just doesn't make sense to have a teacher for that, unfortunately. But we can do things to make those same classes available through things like North Carolina Virtual Public Schools and through things like working with our university. Our university actually enables high school students to enroll in classes there. We're doing things to try to expand that. There are things like other computer-based tools and and tutoring resources. So so we're expanding our our utilization of of community resources to help fill the gap.
Okay. Candice Brownstein?
Well, I agree with a lot of what Greg just said, but I think in order to improve the quality of education that we have, we do have to embrace the 21st century skills as well in terms of how we're offering our coursework to our children. And so using technology, using project-based learning, it's not as much that it has to be the actual class itself, but we can enhance the quality of learning and the standards that are being presented in more creative ways. And I think taking advantage of the global world in terms of getting input from from what's going on in other parts of the world can be incorporated into existing curriculum so that that would broaden the opportunities for all children. And I also think that we might try to explore ways that we could enrich the after-school environment for kids and broaden that to to more children. I think we need to look to bring some of the creativity from the community into into those options as well. Right now, it seems to be driven by some parents that might set up a particular program or advocate for some things, and there's some variability across schools in terms of what those things are available and also what children have access to it. And I think that's something that we could look towards improving.
All right, thank you, Candace Lee.
I agree with both of them. In addition to that, I would like to see more enriching, like she said, in the 21st century skill. And I think some of them needs to be spelled out, such as incorporate more critical thinking, our communication skill, both written and oral for our students, as well as see more collaboration that's working in teams. And we call it creative innovation, which is presenting your material in a new manner. These are some of the 21st century skills that our children need to learn. And I think we by incorporating more of that, as well as foreign language, as mentioned before, because our we really want our students to be able to access our 21st century in positive way and contribute in a positive way. So we need to give them the skills because we have lots of information accessible now. We need to give them the skills so they know what to do with that information. Thank you.
Anyone like to opt in? Okay, candidate Nancy?
Part of the reason we're losing some of that variety is because of the increased number of required courses that we're having. But I think one of the great ways that we have been able, as a school district, to keep the variety, to keep variety at the core of what makes what makes this district special is through the through the academies, particularly at the high school level, where they take themes or variations on the subject and are able to to provide a greater depth and breadth of of subject matter and assignments in in particular in the core classes. You can see those in the International Academy and the Social Justice Academy and some of the others at all three high schools.
Any more opt-ins? Okay, let's go to the next question. Eight thirty-five, and so we decided that we're going to go to eight forty-five and go ahead and use the hole till nine o'clock. All right. So I do want to remind folks that we've asked the Chapel Hill and Carboro Municipal Office candidates five questions about town and school relations. There are a lot of important topics that come up, such as will the towns honor the school adequate public facilities ordinance? If they're asked to deny caps as they've agreed to, and transit-related issues, safety-related issues. So you can look for those after the twentieth on our website, ptacouncil.com. Election day is November third. Early voting starts this Thursday and runs to October 31st. You need to consult the county website. All right, so. Let's figure out where we are. Okay, start with candidate Dancy. "And at this point in time, it is up to local school boards to decide whether seniors have to complete a graduation project to graduate. What is your position on if and when students must do this? Where is the money to support these projects going to come from? And what should we do about the requirement for high schoolers to perform community service hours?"
In theory, the graduation project sounds great. In reality, we don't have the resources to do it. We don't have mentors. We don't have systems. We don't have support. We don't have. There are so many things that fall short of our ability, our capacity to be able to require to support students as they try to meet that requirement. So I am I'm grateful that the state gave the option to delay that, and I think that the school board chose wisely in following that lead. As far as where do the resources come from, I think that's the question we all have to ask. Should it be reinstated by the state, or should they stick to their current deadline? It's that's one of the questions we all have to ask, and I think that it's great to have projects as part of classroom requirements, but to have an overall senior project creates a big challenge unless we have a significant infrastructure to support that.
All right, Candice Gucciardi?
I have to agree with with Susannah. There is a great opportunity for creativity with the graduation project. It's a chance to study a language in depth. It's a chance to work on a social situation or a social justice cause. It's a chance to campaign for your favorite school board candidate. But it must be well thought out. It must be supported with enough personnel and with funds. And it must have a clear goal. And for me, a project like this is something that would contribute to 21st century skills because at work, we work in teams and we work on long-term projects. And when these children start going to college or to work beyond high school, they're going to be working on long-term projects that are going to take a lot of concentration, planning, and organization. And so I see the benefit in this, and I would love to work through it, think through it, have it well-funded, either by the state or searching for endowment money so that it can be the effective tool for developing critical thinkers that it could be.
Candice Green?
I totally support the idea of having the project, research-based projects for our students. One of the reasons why is because I do this currently with the students I work with now through Upward Bound. These are students that I work with that are freshmen and sophomores that are engaged. Of course, this is a program that works outside of schools, but I have freshman and sophomore students who work on research projects that would be, we do it with the idea that when they become seniors, they have an opportunity to do a similar project. I think it's a wonderful idea, and it leads back to your previous question relative to maintaining high school standards and leading the state in terms of outstanding schools. If you were to adopt this project and were to come up with a structure that worked for our students, which I'd love to be involved with, I think it would be something that would be beneficial because this is something that will lead our students to be becoming involved in research as undergraduates when many of them move on to college, and who knows where it can take them. So I think the idea of a project is great because we want to increase rigor, and this is a way in which we can do it. So I really support this idea of a project for our students.
Okay, thank you. One more round or not? Are there any opt-ins for this one? No? We'll try for one more. We'll do 45 seconds. "Foreign language in the lower grades was cut due to the budget constraints. Please address the role of foreign language education in elementary schools, especially in the lower grades." I'll start with candidate Lee. Oh, wait. It says Lee on this question, but it looks like we're on candidate Brownstein for this one, right?
I guess we lost track, so we're leading you.
Yeah.
Am I up?
Yep, you're up.
I appreciate being asked this question, actually. I support the notion that we have to make sure our children get exposure to world language. And one of the reasons that we love the school system was the idea that our child was going to start doing kindergarten foreign language. However, the reality of the experience is it's very piecemeal at that lower level. And so what happens is a lot of children don't actually learn the language. They just get exposed to vocabulary. And for some children, that's very frustrating. So I support the idea of the foreign language at the elementary level. But I think here, again, we need to have measurement of effectiveness of how that is is working and see actually what they are learning in terms of the language itself. Because the goal is wonderful, but I'm not sure that the way our system is set up is allowing those teachers to do what they're trying to do. And so when we can reinstate language, I think we need to look at making sure it's done in a quality fashion at that level as well.
All right, thank you, Candace Lee.
Yes, at the elementary level, it's hard to teach formal type or informal, didactic-type world language. But I think it is important for them to have some exposure. I think exposure into culture as well as the the language itself is very important. Our world is getting very small, and we need to think global. And I think any exposure, and I was sorry to hear some of this, but I think we need to have consistency when we are doing this as well because some teachers do well, some teachers don't. And we also get new children coming in from our school district. So it can't be built onto it, but it has been exposure and introduction to both culture and language.
Candace Dancy?
I agree with Shell. It's a at the early grades, it needs to be done in a way that's much more effective than a social studies project, which is essentially the it's exposure to language, but not in a meaningful way. And I support reinstating it in the early grades, but I think it needs to be done more in a different way.
All right, any opt-ins for this one?
I'd love to opt in.
Okay. Candice Gucciardi?
So language is close to my heart because I've lived overseas, and my children speak two languages as well as English. I would love to rethink how we deliver language because it is so difficult. I would like to explore doing Latin in the early elementary years because that would be very helpful to our ELL learners as well as all of our students. I would love to look at the accountability of what's going on now in terms of having guidelines so that you're hitting certain levels at every year. And it's a great opportunity to have parents who speak a different language welcome into the classroom. Imagine my my daughter is doing Spanish. If some of our Latino parents were coming in to have fifteen- or twenty-minute conversations or doing a little phone bank or a walkie-talkie night, which quite a number of them are doing, speaking with the kids, there's just so much opportunity. And that opens also a cultural awareness for students.
Anyone else have opted in, want to use it? All right, so now we'll go into the closing round, and we're going to do it in the same order that we started the opening round with candidate McElveen first. You've got two minutes, and if you guys could keep it to two minutes, I'd appreciate it because we're going to have to shut the doors at nine.
I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I think we owe debt of gratitude to the League of Women Voters and the PTSA for all their service over the years. And I believe that the it's appropriate that that this forum be sponsored by the PTSA because it is a collaboration of parents, teachers, and students and the community that's necessary to help our children achieve and excel. I believe that in order to be effective, we just need to make the whole community of resources available to our kids. We need to expect nothing less than excellence and make that real and and make our our whole community accountable for that. So as we are evaluating our teachers, as we are evaluating our accountable for that. So as we are evaluating our teachers, as we are evaluating our staff, and as we are evaluating ourselves as parents, we need to think about, well, is my child achieving excellence? And if not, we need to do everything we can to achieve that. That means in, for example, in gifted education, I believe we need to provide critical mass, such that those, all of our children who can use gifted services are clustered and using those services. And we don't need to put limits on who can use it. If the kid, if the child is ready, and if the parents feel that they're ready, I think they need to be made access to that. I think that same rigor should be made available to all of our teachers and all of our kids. I believe that as we pursue excellence, that our children will rise to the occasion. And I believe that as we pursue excellence, that our teachers will more consistently rise to the occasion. I think that we have an excellent district, and we just need to implement more consistently our priorities and our policies. And I look forward to being part of this community and being part of this board to help make that happen.
Thank you, candidate Brownstein.
Thank you also for all the effort that went into this. I do appreciate the opportunity to have the community know me a little bit better and my passion behind, my desire to serve as a school board member for all children. As I've said to you, educational success should be and can be a reality for all our children, and I will proactively address the gaps that prevent any child from reaching his or her potential. My top priorities that come out of all the work that I have done are improving district accountability and increasing the family-school-community collaboration that's so critical, and enhancing communication, so our schools are more effective and efficient for every child. Over the past seven years, I've dedicated myself to educational improvements and advocacy efforts for children in our schools and in our state. And so for the specifics, I urge you to look at my brochure and my website, michellebrownstein.com, because I cannot put it in a soundbite. I've brought my passion, my persistence, and dedication to support what's working and contribute towards systemic change. Through my extensive volunteer work, professional training, and opportunities for leadership, I have gained insight into multiple levels of our educational system and many aspects of our community. With the breadth and depth of my experience, I bring a level of understanding of our district, our schools, and our state's educational system that is absolutely critical at this time, as our schools face the challenge of doing more with less, ensuring quality, closing gaps, and eliminating waste. I am most proud of my track record in this district as a strong advocate for children, and my ability to persevere and bring people together to work towards solutions. I want to use those skills as a member of the school board on behalf of all the children. I'm committed to working to identify effective programs both here and elsewhere that support and improve services and programs for the success of all children in this district. I want to hear your concerns, and I value your opinions. Together, we can have a positive impact. On November third, I need your vote, so I can go to work to help every child succeed. Thank you very much.
Candidate Lee?
First, I would like to thank the audience for coming out tonight, and thanking Mark Peters, PTA Council, as well as the League of Women Voters, for both the preparation and the opportunity. I know you guys put in a lot of work. Thank you. We agree that our school district has done a good job. There's no doubt about it. Borrowing from Jim Collins' book, "Taking Our School District from Good to Great," would not take only strong will and effort, but also the keen insights, understanding where we are now and where we need to be for the 21st century great schools. This relies on extensive district experience and having an effective leadership, which I have demonstrated to have both. I will advocate for every student's academic success, and for policies that cater to every student's needs. I believe in positive education environment, which fosters a love of learning and supports individuals. I will promote safe and welcoming schools for all members. I will listen with an open mind and create innovative solutions within the context of our progressive community. I look forward to working with people with different perspectives for the common goal. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Candidate Nancy?
I also want to thank you for being here tonight, and especially to the volunteers who've made this happen. I want to express to you how important it is for our district to step up. We have done so many things well, and we have fallen short in many ways as well. I would like for us to get to a place where it doesn't take pushy parents to get the services that our children need, because it's our duty as a school board to provide that. I am a, I'm a fact-based decision-maker. I want to look at evidence of what the current programs are doing, and what's working and what's not. And I believe that we can shape our policy moving forward based on looking at the facts and having a critical viewpoint of how things are done, and what's, again, what's working. I'm savvy with figures, and in my professional work, I manage budgets and projects and know how to delve into those things in a productive way, to find creative solutions, and to keep us on track. I'm also a believer in follow-through, that as we look at the plans that are made, that we hold the administration accountable for making sure those plans are implemented all the way through to all of the schools, to all of the levels. I believe that's really important as we, if we want to see a change in our district. I believe we live in a great place. I believe we're lucky to be here, and I believe that we still can work to improve and not sit back and assume that we are the best we can be. Thank you.
Thanks, candidate Gucciardi.
I want to add my thanks to everyone else's, for everyone here, and for everyone who helped organize. It's a great opportunity to be able to share with everyone. This is the last public chance we have to distinguish ourselves as candidates, and I want to highlight my work experience, my experiences living overseas, the experiences with a school startup, and my experiences building partnerships to get things done. And I want to just highlight that I really, truly believe with every cell in my body that every student can achieve, and that genius is created, and that we can do this as a school system by exploiting technology, by evidence-based administration, and by exploiting technology in a way that we have not yet done. I truly believe that we can create an environment where our children will want to run to school to learn every day, and where when they graduate from our high school, they will become future leaders of the world. We have to have this kind of vision that will guide us as a school board in every policy and decision that we will make. And so I ask for your vote on November third, so that we can start creating true global lifelong learners that will come out of Chapel Hill Carrboras as leaders of our community, and of our state, and of our country, and of the world. Thank you.
Yeah, candidate Green?
I'd like to thank the PTA, as well as the League of Women Voters, for having us this evening and being wonderful hosts. My educational background and work career include experiences as an educator from Iowa to Delaware to Virginia, Florida, North Carolina, and back. For the previous seventeen years, I've worked in education at the secondary level and post-secondary level, working with students to empower them, directly serving students as a teacher and instructor and administrator and coach. I say that to you to say that there are a few things that I'd like to do. I'd like to empower our teachers. I'd like to increase communication with parents. I'd like to showcase our students' skills. And lastly, I'd like to provide the best possible education for all students. That's why I'm running for school board. I love this opportunity to work and serve our community. And lastly, I'd like to, again, thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of closing comments, and we'll wrap this up. I ask everyone here in the audience, and who might be watching this right now or watching this later, and candidates, please give us feedback on things you liked tonight, things you didn't like, things you might suggest we do differently next time. The next candidate forum that we will be holding will be the county commissioners, coming up in the spring before the primary. And we intend to post the video, a link to it on ptacouncil.com, so you can watch for that in the next few days. Again, the municipal questions and answers will be posted. And with that, I'll close. Thank you, candidates. I appreciate it. And have a good night.